Dean, please call the roll.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla.
Here.
Mr. Gesheier.
Present.
Dr. Ogres.
Present.
Ms. Riley.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Arthur.
Here. Please join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And now, Dr. Brechner will lead the "We Are Proud of Our Schools" introductions.
We are proud of our schools. And tonight, we want to take a moment to say thank you to a special board member, Mr. Bill Grove, served as our president, and we want you to have a commemorative gavel. You can use it at home, Thanksgiving dinner, et cetera. We appreciate your service. We were going to give this to you at our meeting when you were working at the elections, but thank you so much for your service as our president.
My pleasure, thank you.
Very nice. Now, an approval of our agenda, is there a motion?
I move approval of our agenda as presented.
Thanks, sir.
Second.
Second, any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I need opposed, same sign, motion carried. And approval of our minutes for the work session and regular meeting of November 8th. Any, is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the minutes for the work session and the regular meeting on November 8th.
Second.
Second.
Any changes or discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, we are to the public participation part of our meeting. If there's anyone in the public who would like to speak, please do so now. No one came to wish us Happy Thanksgiving, I see, okay. Now, we're on to superintendent's report, Dr. Brechner.
You and I should have connected ahead of time, but you wanted the board to maybe share some ideas. Do you want to use that as public participation?
Since it's not addressed on our agenda, it would be best that we take that up at a study session or at another time.
So, we are on to the superintendent's report, and our first item is student achievement. Our board had the opportunity at our last meeting to have speed data-ing, in which they got to meet with various principals and talk about their school improvement plans. And Dr. Vorthman and a team of excellent representatives is going to talk about what our school improvement process is. Thanks, Cory.
Good evening, Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
It's my pleasure tonight to provide a little bit of additional context to go with the speed dating that we were able to engage in at the last board meeting. And specifically provide some information about kind of the how of school improvement in general. And to do so, tonight, we'd like to look at that really through four different lenses. And I have a cast of very able practitioners who are here tonight who are experts, because this is the way that we do business, day in and day out, in our school district, to talk about the data consult and how that guides school improvement planning. The school improvement plan itself as a vehicle for improvement. Professional development as the capacity building arm of the school improvement process. And then, monitoring and coaching and how that helps with the actual implementation of the plan. So, tonight, I have five guests with me tonight, if you guys want to come up. First, tonight, you're going to hear from Carrie Newman, principal at Kern Middle School, who's going to talk about the data consult process. And then, you will hear from Doreen Canuth, principal at Carter Lake, who's going to share with us about the school improvement plan itself, specifically how implementation and impact data help us really focus a very skinny plan on student achievement and building culture in our schools. Thirdly, you will hear from Bridget Bello, principal of Abraham Lincoln High School, who will talk about how professional development is used as a vehicle for implementation of her plan. And then, Director of Elementary Education Julie Smith and Director of Secondary Education, Dr. Jason Plord, will share with you some insights on how they use their regular weekly visits with principals to help monitor the plan and then coach the implementation. This is Newman.
I'm really happy to talk to you tonight about the data consult. Interestingly enough, I didn't know where I would be in the order, because school improvement is a cycle, and so, it's a beginning and an end, the data consult. But, at the close of the year and throughout the year, as I am working with a team, which is a teacher leadership team and our administrative team, to monitor how we're doing and progressing with our school improvement plan, the data consult provides a time at the end where data's collected, and more importantly, data's reflected upon. And so, it's not about making charts and graphs and that kind of thing, it's more about analyzing what we have discovered and trying to look at it through a lot of different lenses. And then, the data consult is a time to reflect on, hey, how'd we do on our school improvement plan? What are we missing? Where are we going from here? What insights did we find that could help us improve learning, especially for students that may be in gaps, or in need, or underserved? So, it also provides insights on our implementation, which I know some of my colleagues are going to talk a little bit about. So, for example, last year, we, at Kern, got a nice achievement bump in lots of areas. We're really proud of that. But until we dug in, we were able to determine why we got that bump. And so, we had data to support that, you know, although our instruction was really good, and we were proud of our instruction and our engagement with students, it didn't improve as much as we had hoped, and we don't think that's how we got the increase. And so, we did get an increase, so it helped us to look at, why do we think we got that? And so, it helps us focus on what we need to do moving forward, and it doesn't attribute success to something that it doesn't belong to. And so, we are really excited about the data consult, to have the time to reflect with colleagues, to say, where do we need to go next? And to really look and scrutinize how we got the success or the achievements that we did. It helps us look at groups. We've discovered a lot about our tag students and really carefully monitoring them this year. So, I hope that that gave you a picture. It's not just a wall of graphs and charts, it's more about insights and narratives to describe the learning goals.
Thank you for having us here. There are two pieces that are very critical to our school improvement plan in helping us to... Thank you. In helping us to focus and to guide our decision-making, and that is our implementation data and our impact data. The implementation data helps me to monitor the school improvement plan and how it's being implemented in our school building and in our classrooms. And one of the things that Dr. Vorthman and Mrs. Smith did last June during our sessions where we presented our draft school improvement plans, was really to guide our thoughts around how we could make the implementation data more specific and more measurable. So, they asked questions like, so how often are you going to collect that implementation data? Is this weekly? Is it monthly? Once a trimester? And what's going to be that success criteria for it? Will 50% of your teachers be implementing that with fidelity? Will it be 60%, 70%, and so on? So, now, we've got a lot more specificity, as I said, with our implementation data. And this helps really guide my feedback to teachers. As I'm walking through classrooms and visiting with teams, I can look for those models that show the implementation as it should be with fidelity. It also helps me to determine what supports teachers need. What professional development might they need? What do we need to be talking about in our learning teams? How can our coaches support teachers? The second piece, then, is the impact data, and that is, just as it said, the impact on students. So, how is what we are doing translating to that student achievement and student success? And with impact data, we gather the formative pieces like our district math assessments, district reading assessments, attendance data, maybe office referral data, but all those things that give us an insight into how we are helping our students and what decisions we might need to make. So, both impact data and implementation data are critical Google map pieces to our school improvement plans to help us ensure that we're reaching our destination. And as you can kind of hear, this theme with all of us is that focus, and Dr. Brechner and Dr. Vorthman wanted that to be in the forefront of the administrative team mind, so they brought all of us back wristbands from a conference they went to, and on it, it says "Focus," so that's our job. I hope all of you have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Me too.
Okay, so I was asked to talk a little bit about professional development plans, and I'm going to key off of something Doreen said, which is focus. And, you know, like every school in the district, we go through the data consult process and the school improvement planning process, and we involve lots of people in that. And then, our challenge is to provide or to develop a professional development plan that is focused, that we can really, that we can really truly implement. In years past, I think we've really had these kind of big ideas, lots of things in the plan, and really, when it comes down to it, it's, you know, month six, and you're thinking, oh, my gosh, I haven't even finished, you know, step one of the PD plan. And so, what I would say, when I would speak to this, I would say that we've really been challenged with becoming very focused on professional development. What do we really need? And that all goes back to that data consult process. What are we, what are we missing? Lots of input from staff, sometimes from students and parents as well, you know, what pieces are we missing? And how can we stay focused to really make change, which I think is the biggest challenge that we have? And this is my second year as head principal, and I, and I've been as involved in the school improvement planning process as an assistant principal ever could be, but I never felt the pressures of it until I, you know, was in this role. And even now, today, I'm standing here twelve weeks into the school year, and I'm saying, oh, my gosh, I haven't, I'm not where I need to be in my professional development plan. But, it is very focused. It's absolutely tied to the data that we, that we reflect upon. We look for tight alignment between our school improvement planning goals and the things that we're doing for teachers and staff. And we really, I think, try to make it as meaningful as we can for everybody that's involved. I'll share a little bit about specifically to AL, something that, that we've been working on this year, and that's really involving our TLC, our teacher leaders, and more of the professional development process. I think, I feel pretty good about what we've done with our classroom strategists and our instructional coaches in terms of getting them involved a little bit more in moving the professional growth of all teachers in our building. And I think that probably, I can speak for all buildings, we're all trying to do that a little bit more. But the key really is focus in that plan, so. And it all comes from the data that we've reviewed and the goals that we set for our buildings, so.
Dr. Plord and I are going to be speaking about why we go out and coach. What's the purpose of our role in going out and helping principals do what they do around school improvement? The first thing we'll talk about is a little bit exactly what you heard about, the purpose, our first purpose is to go out and help principals reflect on their progress on their school improvement plan. So oftentimes, we ask a lot of things about, so, you know, how's your data looking? How did that look compared to last year? Where are you at? How far did you think you would be? Those types of things is really about that impact and the implementation data. How are your teachers, you know, how are your teachers doing? And so, we do a lot of coaching around that, but then also along that, it's like, well, what's stopping this from not being where you want it to be? What seems to be getting in your way? What barriers are they coming around? And then, lastly, on that reflection piece about that, just as Bridget had mentioned, was about their professional development plans. And that whole thing of reflecting to help them stay focused, because the principal's job is so complex and so many things they have to deal with, our job, one of our jobs is to go out and coach around that.
Dr. Brechner, Board of Education, thanks for having us this evening. One other piece of that is really having conversations around impact. And this past summer, we were able to attend a conference where we heard a researcher, actually an internationally known researcher, his name's John Hattie, and one of the things he taught us is that teacher efficacy and helping teachers understand how much power they truly have and how much impact they have towards students teaches us a lot, and the research is really clear on that. So, related to that is helping principals understand and administrators understand and all of us in this room understand that we also have a great impact on students. And so, Julie and I spend time with the principals, talking about their impact and their implementation data, like Doreen mentioned, but really probing them in ways that are professional, but talking about celebrations, but also being that professional coach in their life that says, let's talk about these things that, that you're facing in terms of challenges also. So, we try to balance those two things, obviously, but principals, head principals in particular have a lonely life, I think people don't realize that, and everybody needs a coach. Dr. Brechner and Dr. Vorthman serve those, you know, that purpose for Julie and I, but Dr. Brechner challenged our team this past summer to look at the model of school improvement, and with the help of Dr. Vorthman and Teaching Learning, we created version 2.0 of the SIP, and you're hearing a little bit about that tonight. But one component was adding that coaching layer, and Julie and I fulfill that role.
A second way that we really go out and coach with principals is around implementation walkthroughs. And the purpose for this is really about developing that capacity around clarity around what does good instruction look like? Again, the principal's job is very solo, so when you go in and observe in a classroom, sometimes you question your own thoughts about what it was. So, when we are there and we have that opportunity to walk in the classrooms with them, then come out and discuss about, what did you see that matched with your plan? What did you see that you saw implemented there? How was it? And it's, it's always really interesting, the varying views. Sometimes, the principal's a lot more critical, sometimes the coach is a lot more critical. But it's all working toward building that clarity about, what do we really think good instruction looks like, and how is that related to your plan?
So, in terms of walkthrough, you'll see up on the screen there that it says monitoring. And one of the ways to monitor and to look at implementation and impact is with individual teachers as well as small groups and departments. So, the other component that we talk about is feedback. So, we'll go back to the office and we'll have a conversation about maybe an individual teacher and what type of feedback principal might you or your team provide to that individual, whether it's a celebration, or whether it's a challenge, or whether it's a reflective question. And then, we also talk about small groups, departments, and what type of feedback might they need as well as your building. What are some celebrations that you're going to look forward to as a part of professional development to make sure you're celebrating progress? But then, what are some things you're going to challenge on your team? So, we talk a little bit about feedback.
You know, if I could take two steps backward and start this all over again, Jason was the polite one that said, "Thank you." But I also wanted to say, we probably have the best jobs in the district because we get to go out and do this work. And I would say the last piece that we usually coach on when we're out there, I would just call it like a problems of practice-type coaching. Again, there's not a lot of people in a building a principal can confide in when something isn't going like they would see it, or when they just need more ideas in order to be able to figure something out, whether it's around their implementation plan or another area within their thing. So, we are that sounding board oftentimes for principals coming out. I can't really think of a visit I go on where that's not an important and key piece of being able to do and be able to help problem solve with principals in areas where they, when they don't have another person in the building to do that with.
Yeah, so just a couple final comments. I would just add to what Julie said, and really, again, we're there for the principals, and we listen, and we challenge them, and we learn along with them. And Julie and I, of course, are former principals, so we can empathize with some of the challenges that our head principals have, and that leads to trust and to productive conversations. And then, the last thing I'll say is, I would echo what Bridget Bello said, is we've been doing school improvement and data consults and so forth for some time, but this last summer, when we went on a little retreat and talked about what, what should version 2.0 of the school improvement plan look like, and what you're hearing this evening was, was the fruits of that discussion. But what I really love about our new school improvement plan process, not that we didn't do this before, but you saw the slide with focus, and you've heard that tonight, we're more focused than ever. We're refined in our thinking around it, and what I like is that we're, we're actually doing the plans. Like, these are not plans, some districts, let's be honest, put this plan on the shelf, they feel good about it, they present it to the board, and then they go about business as usual. We're resisting that temptation, and we're actually utilizing the data and the professional development plans on a weekly, really a daily basis, so that's all I'll share.
Thank you.
So, I just want to close tonight with a couple of thoughts about the work that we do around improvement. And many of you were able to hear from many other school districts at the IASB conference that we attended last week. One of the things that struck me as I reflected upon that opportunity to learn was how blessed we are in Council Bluffs for a variety of reasons. One of them is because of the leadership of our superintendent and our Board of Education, and that is that we regularly have meaningful conversations about student achievement. And that's not the case in all school districts. Your guiding principals demand that we put student achievement at the forefront. And one of the vehicles that we have to be able to achieve that goal from the Board of Education is we are blessed with excellent educational leaders in our school district. And I get to visit other school districts and talk to other school district leaders on a regular basis, and I would put our principals and their, not only their educational acumen, but their drive and their compassion for every one of our teachers, our custodians, our support staff, and our kids. I would put that up against any, anybody in the school district in the state of Iowa. They are focused in their plans, they are intentional in their work, and they are driven to make sure that our school district succeeds. The same can be said for Julie and Jason. Their hearts are in this work because they truly believe that their job is to serve the principals in which they're entrusted. So, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I'm thankful for your leadership. I'm thankful for our principals' leadership because they, they truly believe that every teacher, every building deserves an improvement plan, not by chance, but by intentional design. So, we would, any of us would be open to any of your questions tonight.
I guess I would say, first of all, thank you, and Happy Thanksgiving to you all. I have a, I mean, I think we all, especially after spending, you know, up to three days with other school boards and superintendents and other folks, would recognize that we are unique here, I think, in the level of caring and level of expertise who provide kids. I, you know, that said, I think we have that challenge, we've talked through those things of just addressing our, addressing our challenges head-on and honestly, you know, where they are, so many challenges in a district like ours. And I think sometimes with the Board of Education, when you're looking at like the school improvement plan documents that were in our last board packet, personally, to me, if I'm, if I'm looking at that, it's tough because they're all so different, plan to plan from school to school, looking at those, I don't know if there's a way to have some uniformity when there is, I think, latitude to set your own goals and your own benchmarks. But I did have a couple of questions on, on some of those, where a lot of them set out a goal at end of year of 80% proficiency in reading, which I, and math, which I thought was a great goal. I also referenced the fact that that's a really big goal, given where we are. And then, there were some that had lesser goals, and I didn't know if that was, if, if one was being overly optimistic and the other one was accurate, or if we were saying that we know this school's going to struggle, so we've intentionally given it lesser goals, and we know these other ones are doing well. But, I guess, and I look at some of the scores where they were at, where they were showing, and some showed data and some don't with those targets. I think it's hard to look at that and draw conclusions at all on the schools as a whole, personally, versus, like, I can look through here and I go, well, you know, Carter Lake gave me a lot of information about their performance, right? And then, I automatically want to go, okay, how can I help? Another way I can help is by asking questions, right? And since they gave me data to ask questions about, you know, I sure want to start asking questions about it, you know? And I want to say, you know, I see where we have some struggles in reading, or we have some class, classes that look like they're down about a quarter of the kids are proficient. And is that true? Was that a momentary thing that's happened to me? Is that inaccurate? Like, especially fourth grade stood out to me. I don't know if that's an accurate thing I'm seeing there, because the other ones don't show me that data. You know, and the year-end goal of getting somewhere to 55 or 58, if that's true, that would be good growth in that timeframe, right? But I would, I would not like to say that by the end of year, 50% of our kids would be proficient in reading unless that, unless I'm not understanding what that goal means, personally.
Good questions, Troy. So, I'll answer it in a couple of different ways. First of all, you will see a lot of commonality around 80% as a goal for our summative measures. So, if you look at that, that last test at the end of the year, we are, we're driving toward 80% proficiency, and there's a reason for that. One of the things that we know is if we can achieve 80% proficiency, so 80% of our kids meet the threshold for proficiency, that will tell us that the core instruction or the universal, what every kid gets is in terms of classroom instruction, that that is sufficient, that is doing a good job. Until that happens, until we get to that 80% proficiency, we have work to do on core instruction. So, you'll see that as a pretty common across most schools, as they've set 80% as the threshold for their summative measures. But then, you will also see in the impact section of their school improvement plan, you will see formative assessments or interim assessments along the way that help us predict how likely we are to get to 80%. And sometimes, those are, the only acceptable answer is 80%, is because that's the expectation. And you'll see that oftentimes on our district assessments. We expect 80% of our kids to meet proficiency. Then, you will see other assessments where the buildings have identified, we expect to see incremental growth on this assessment because it will show us that we're making progress. So, it doesn't necessarily become the goal, like the 80% proficiency on the summative measure is, but it helps us, it helps us, we use that as a predictor to help identify if we're likely to meet that goal. So, that's oftentimes why you'll see that we may have a goal of 40% by the end of trimester one, and 50% by trimester two, and 70% by trimester three, hoping that we can measure our progress toward meeting that goal, reflect on what we've done, and then make changes along the way. So, that's one of the reasons you'll see that. Another part of your question related to uniformity. So, what we've tried to do is create a common process. So, everybody uses a common process as common language, so that unifies our conversations together and that people, we know that people have better understanding when they are able to use common language, but you also see a common format. Everybody uses the same thing there. You'll see that everybody has a culture goal and a student achievement, an academic achievement goal. And typically, the academic achievement goal is in two parts, it's in mathematics and literacy, not because we don't think that the other content areas are important, but because those are the two high-stakes measures in which we receive feedback from the state on. Aside from that, we've given the buildings and their leadership team a lot of leverage to choose the goals that make the most sense to them based on their reflection and analysis of the data. We know that in the majority of our buildings, I would say all of our buildings, you will see that the academic goal always focused on improving core instruction. Hundred percent of them chose a goal around core instruction, not because I told them to, or not because Jason or Julie told them to, but because as they looked at the data, they were able to identify that their core instruction is not yet sufficient. they were able to identify that their core instruction is not yet sufficient. They do not yet have 80% of their students meeting proficiency. So you'll see that as a very common measure. The other common measure I think you will see in terms of culture is almost every school uses the human X as an indicator of how healthy their school culture is, as manifested by the percentage of staff that report that they are both satisfied and engaged in their work. And what we use as, most buildings use as metrics to help identify, is that improving or not, is they also look at the climate in their building. Because we know that climate, has a tremendous climate, when I say climate, I'm talking about the things that kids are doing in the building, how, and how kids and students interact, has a tremendous impact on the culture of the building. Culture of the building being how the staff, the adults behave. That's what dictates culture. And so you'll see a lot of metrics designed like attendance rates or office referrals or suspensions because they help us identify whether or not that culture is improving or not. Aside from that, we give the buildings tremendous latitude to make the decisions that are most focused on their individual needs. Because as you noticed and you very well stated, there is a lot of disparity, a lot of variance in our buildings and not only in student achievement, but in subgroup achievement and in culture. And so we want to be able to give both the support and defer to the expertise of the people who are closest to the problem to solve the problem. Our job then is to provide exceptional support and guidance along the way to make sure that they're able to have the tools that they need to go after those problems. Because I don't feel comfortable, and I know Jason and Julie don't feel comfortable dictating to every building that they all solve the same problem or solve the same problem in the same way. That's why we have exceptional principals. They know exactly, they, they and their leadership team can pinpoint what their needs are.
This conversation's familiar. I think we talked about this last year, about allowing that and, and wanting that just because it's their building and it's, it's their team and their students, and they know them better than anybody else, so why wouldn't they create that?
Well, and they also, to your point, Troy, they also, we also engage them in difficult questions every week. And because of the investment of our school district, we are able to have two exceptional individuals who go out and work with principals every week and are in their buildings and are visible in their buildings. That doesn't happen everywhere. In fact, that, our, our principal coaching model is one that I've not seen widely replicated around our state just simply because of either lack of resource or expertise or oftentimes trusting relationships. Julie and Jason have incredible credibility with the principals. They provide them regular professional development on a monthly basis, as well as individualized coaching. And what these plans have done is provided a very precise focus for what those conversations will be about. So I know I, Julie and Jason, they can speak to it if you have additional questions. But we, we, we huddle every week and talk about how our buildings are doing and where do we need to push additional resources and support? And oftentimes that, that feedback comes from, you know, celebrations and sometimes tears that happen during those weekly conversations with principals. Because they want to do good work. They want to improve. Nobody's out there working harder than our principals and teachers to make sure that student achievement improves. We just have to be really smart about the way in which we approach the work. And we think that by being more focused, by looking at the data more regularly and asking hard questions about what that data tells us in terms of next steps, that we will continue to increase student achievement in our district.
Can you help me understand the process that you go through when you're, when you find a teacher, whether they're, they've been with the district for a long time or whether they're new to the district, when they're struggling to find those teaching methods that are, that they're using to reach the students that are, that, that don't seem to be connecting to the, to the content? Can you go through, when, when you've got some walkthroughs, what kind of strategies or what, what you do to help assist a, a struggling teacher when, when they can't seem to find that teaching style that matches the students in the classroom?
So let's answer that two ways. Let's answer it from the principal perspective and then from the principal and coach perspective as they do walkthroughs together.
First of all, I've never ever worked in a district or worked for a district that had so much support for those teachers that you're describing. We have teacher mentors that swoop in before I can even get to them, that support them. And then we have instructional coaches who are intuitively working with PLCs and kind of sense that there's a problem and help support as well. But more than ever, the role that I play with teachers is coach. And of course, there's a time when you get directive, there always is. But until that time, if a teacher is reflective and wanting to do good work for students, which I find 100% they want to, there's a lot of avenues that we can take. And so for me to go in and have those support people that I described, we are able to really help teachers find their voice in the room to serve students. We have paired and we have PLCs where teachers are helping one another. In our school improvement plan at Kern, the strategies that they're learning, they're selecting based on their own need, and they are getting feedback, not from me, but from each other. And I'm finding that their growth is just exponential with that. So I think just to answer your question, it is the amount, the immense amount of support that they're getting from a variety of sources. And then I become just another coach and not someone that they're afraid of. And the focused professional development that Bridget talked about, teachers can make sense of it now. It's not overwhelming to them.
I think Carrie said it well. I'll just add a few, few things. My role, as I mentioned before, and Julie's role, is to have those hard conversations when necessary with the principals, whether it be individual teachers, as you referenced, or small groups or departments. And of course, we, we spend time as supervisors when necessary. But one of the things that's challenged our thinking most recently around this, there's a gentleman, his name is Dr. Dylan Williams, and he wrote a book recently about this. And one of the things that challenged my thinking on it is he talks a little bit about how do you really want to spend your time? And how do you want us to spend our time? How do we want to spend our time? And he challenged us in many ways, but one of the things he talks about is we've spent a lot of time in education thinking about those one or two teachers at all of our buildings. And again, it's not to be ignored, that's not what he's saying. But he said we should be in the business of improving teachers, and that should be the first step and the focus. Carrie used the term coaching. She spends a lot of time coaching, just like Julie and I spend time coaching. But the good thing about educators, and this is true about our district, and I think like Troy said, in particular, you guys learned that recently. We have some amazing people here, but they're good people. They want to do their job, they want to do a great job. And sometimes they just need a coach to help them with an instructional practice. Back to Troy's question, one of the things you'll see common K-12 in our district, which was a powerful moment when we discovered that all of our schools and all of our leadership teams from each school had made a decision to look at instructional practices. And what do quality classrooms look like? And so we're revisiting that. Not that we never have, but we're partnering with the State Department and some great trainers there. And we're just going back and thinking about what do the greatest teachers do? What do the greatest classrooms look like? What do the great schools do? And revisiting that through the lens of instructional practices. So that's been a common conversation most recently. We're excited about it.
One question I have, do you involve our non-certified staff in any of these initiatives? Good. One of the things we learned at our conference last week was that oftentimes the school secretary or the custodian or the bus driver, the public will believe more than they will you. So I think it's good that you involve those people. Kudos to you.
And I guess I just, I think that especially after, you know, every time we go to Des Moines for that convention, I'm always walk away that how impressed I am with our, with our district. And how, how strange the world must be in some of these districts that have just top-performing families and top-performing kids, and they, and their biggest fear is if they're going to win the football game that, that coming season or that week, you know? You know, I feel that if there was ever a time where, I think we've somehow reached this nexus here where we have a board that is completely supportive of what we do. I think we have a phenomenal team that is probably providing better coaching, mentoring, and instruction than we've ever had before, right? And at the same time, we have kids who are struggling like never before, you know? And we have families less engaged, you know, than we probably have had in the history of education. And then that, the disconnect between public perception and, and the real work we're doing is, is seems to just get a little wider all the time. And when we saw some of those videos, some of those presenters that were talking about education nationally, and you think if, if people would see that and then come witness what we do, they would be impressed and thankful for what we do here. But I do think that, that you have the opportunity with everyone's support to be as brutally honest as you can be because we'll be supportive, you know? But I would like to have, you know, I talked to you about, I would like to have that conversation where we just go, you know, we have a challenge like we haven't faced in a while, you know? And then maybe that is because we don't let kids fail. We don't let kids go away. But I think that that, I don't know, just like I like the information when I can see it because I want to clear understanding where we're at, you know? Not that I know anything about education, really, other than to ask questions, so.
How long have we been using this process?
I think school improvement planning in general probably has always been and manifested in some way. I don't know, Doreen, Julie, you guys probably have some of the historical expertise.
But the way that you were doing it now?
So Dr. Mozbach implemented school improvement planning, my predecessor. And we kind of refer to that as kind of version 1.0. And that took us a long way toward getting a comprehensive plan for each of our schools to really look at where they wanted to improve. Two years ago, we, basically what we did is we put the plan in front of the principals and said, if you could tweak this plan to make it more user-friendly and meet your needs in a better way, what would you do? So we gathered feedback from them and we made some adjustments to it and we brought it back to them and said, how does this process look? How does this feel? And they gave us some more feedback. And then in 2015, 16, we implemented our first kind of revised way of looking at school improvement through that lens of two big goals, one culture, one student achievement, and then paying very close attention to how we're going to monitor how teachers are implementing the expectations of the plan, and then how we are monitoring the student achievement impact of the plan with specific feedback and coaching along the way. So that's about two years old.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
And now we have informational presentations and annual personnel report.
And maybe Mr. Kozier, what's the legal way to do it? Poor Mr. McGreeve has been sitting there and he's got a short report. I'm wondering, how can we move that up above annual personnel report?
Just do that, can't we? Yeah, you can.
Yes, you can.
Actually, once we set, publish the agenda, if a member of the public wanted to show up to our meeting for a certain piece of the agenda, if we move that forward, we could get in trouble if somebody were to show up desiring at such time that they believed this report would be there and they see the report on the agenda before it is being presented, they would expect the report after it to show up. We have to, we have to publish the agenda in order at least 24 hours ahead of the meeting.
Nobody thought we'd be at 7:23 after the first item. So I think if they were coming for that report, they might have been here, but I'll go fast.
Okay, annual personnel report.
Hi, I'm Toby Reese. Oh, no, I'm not. Toby Reese is a wonderful new addition to our team. But before we hired her, she had family plans for this week. We told her that this report needs to be done in, in November, and we just could not get it done for the first November meeting. So it's tonight. Toby presented this, her whole team worked on it. And I am just the spokesperson, but I'm going to try to answer any questions I can related to the report. You have in your board packet all of the data. Let me start with the point that Troy Arthur made about brutally honest. This data is brutally honest, and this is data that is not generally shared in a public meeting anywhere that I have ever known before. In fact, when Janet Reiners got pushed to do this about four years ago, she went later in that year to a meeting at UNO and was told at the UNO HR, Human Resources Subteam, that nobody else had data like this. The dean of the College of Education said, the data that Council Bluffs puts together is thorough, is helpful, et cetera. So this is data that not everybody gets, and so some of it's data that we wish looked a little different, but it doesn't. This is the facts. This is our staff for this year, as you saw in the report. K-12 educators, 561, K-12 special educators, 106, and in preschool, we have 34 individuals. Administrative and support staff comes up to that 576 number, and your data showed you exactly what that is. The highest number here is in paraeducators, 218. General workforce information, it's interesting, as I heard earlier this evening. 42% of our teachers have five years or less of experience. That's pretty amazing. We really do have a teaching force that's turning over. 18% have six to 10 years, 14% have 11 to 15, and 26/4 of our teachers have 16 or more years. So we have a young teaching force that gets, seems to get younger every year. The most senior teacher has 41 years of experience, and 11 of our teachers have 35 or more years. Administrators, over half of our administrators have five or less years, five or fewer years of experience as an administrator. That's pretty remarkable. And yet, as you heard Cory and his team point out, that's really good news that we have such good principals that have done with, with, that are fairly new, many of them fairly new in their position. Two administrators have 36 years of service in the district. 64% of our teachers have master's degrees. I heard one of you mention that in our previous meeting. One of our teachers has a doctorate. And administrators, 12 and a half percent of them have doctorate degrees, but that's our group. Teacher leadership, you heard in our prior meetings, some kudos about the TLC program. We think it's wonderful. We wish that it would be funded forever and that the funding would continue to be at the level it is without taking funding away from any other sources. The goal is to have, in fact, the requirement is to have 25% of our instructional staff in those positions. Last year, we were at about 21.9%. This year, we're, 22% last year, we're very close to that. We keep trying to bump that up. We keep trying to bump that up. The Department of Ed knows that we're trying to bump it up. We have several positions that are not filled and we're going to try to do some changes again this year to get that to 25%, not just to meet the 25%, but because we think it's important. Staff diversity, we struggle with this on an ongoing basis. We wish that I had reports that I could show you that showed we are winning this effort, but we are not. We have a total of 16 members of our staff that are Hispanic, three that are Black or African-American. We have many more females than males in our overall population. We continue to work on this. I am, I am not exaggerating when I tell you that someone from HR department comes in thrilled if, if they can say to me, you know, we have somebody that's a very serious contender for a job that comes from minority ranks. We need that, we want that, we would value it. We are not giving up on it, but these, these are the facts. This is the part that I don't necessarily want to put up in front of everybody, but these are the facts. Our leave last year was about 22,000 days, an average of 17.7 days per employee. A majority of those were related to sick leave. We had a serious increase in family care days, an increase in sick days, and an increase in doc days taken. Increase overall of 2.9 days over the 2014-15 school year. We keep discussing how we can address this, okay? If your family's sick, you have to be home with your family. And perhaps as we have more and more younger teachers and more and more younger administrators, we have more and more reasons that they have to stay home and take care of sick children. So this may in fact be a natural outgrowth of the fact that our population is, is young, not, not aging. We do keep talking about other ways we could change how we count leave that would entice more people to, to not take leave, but when the data comes back that says the main reason they take it is because of sick leave or family leave, it's hard to change. This is our second year of the wellness program. We know we had some strengths in the first year, but we know we have a long way to go to get it the best we can be. It just ends up not necessarily always being at the top of our list of things we look at. We have encouraged people to take health screenings every year. Those are free and they are very handy because we send them out to all of the buildings. We have increased opportunities for engagement. I did a health screening. I've been on the website, but I can tell you, I don't get on, on an annual, on a regular basis to update my stats and, and I need to do that and so do many of our other employees. We had a Step It Up Walk at Gail Wickersham and it was very successful, even though we had some people that thought it was too early or too late in the day, but when you have the timed starts at buildings change as much as ours do with middle schools getting out at 2:30 and high schools getting out much later and elementary schools getting out even later, then it's hard to make everybody happy. But we, we're trying to do that. Human resources staff is a great staff. We have one person there that I haven't even met, he, David Herrick, the HR specialist. We have interviewed lots and lots of people and they finally decided David was the one and he starts on December 1st. Several of these are new. You know Toby is new. Tammy Nielsen is fairly new as an HR specialist. Amanda Hasty has been here just this year and our payroll specialists continue. Amy Stewart is stalwart of this committee, this, this department. We love Amy and we're, we're glad she continues to be part of this team. Before I leave, I want to talk not just about wellness, but about safety because we are here today as part of Safety Week and I have for you, you lucky guys, you get a district safety shirt. Safety is another program that the HR department oversees. We are trying very hard to keep our people safe. We care about them, we don't want them to get hurt. That's true. But we also know that if they get hurt or if they have insurance claims, it costs them and us money, so we have all sorts of reasons. So we have various sizes here, so you can pick your size up. It's very nice shirt. Green, and then our theme. Stay alert, don't get hurt. And we had people throughout the district wearing those the last two days. Before we talk about the last part of this report, are there any questions about this that I can try to answer?
Question about the absenteeism, the leave rate or whatever. Would it be helpful to have ranges? Maybe it's that high because we had a half a dozen people on 60-day sick leave or something?
That might be helpful. We can look at that data.
If you look at it like that, that 10% of the time, they're not here. And that's the average. There's got to be some reasons for that.
It would take a lot of people to move that number with 21,000 days.
I don't know, it just seems to me, and you alluded to it in your comments, that it's not something you really want to talk about, but I just think that's.
I, I can, I don't think I can have it this week.
No, 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 no.
But what I can do is find out, so what were, without any names obviously or any description, the top highest, the 10 highest number of days taken and see if, if that theory rolls out. We'll certainly try to find it. That wouldn't be hard to find.
I know we also have a lot of young teachers. Maybe there's lots of kids. You know, since we're saying 46% of our staff is under five years or whatever that number is, there was a lot of sick kids last year, in particular justifying.
How many sick days do they get?
15.
Cumulative.
But then they can accumulate, accumulate those. But yeah, they carry over the ones they don't use up to a certain amount.
That's a pretty good number.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not trying to cast any blame. I, I just know as former principal, when you don't have the regular teacher there, it's tough to have instruction carry on like when they're there. This just seems like an awful lot of days.
Is this just sick days or is this personal days too?
Everything, isn't it?
This is everything.
How many personal days do they get? Three?
Three.
Is there a, is there a way to look at impact by school, maybe? Like if there's a school where we had a large number?
We have, we have the data by school.
Then you could say, well, yeah, that school struggled in this area, maybe, I don't know.
We have, we have also never analyzed school achievement compared to leave analysis, to absences, have we? What did we find out? No correlation? Okay.
Well, the other thing you could do, in prior reports, we've not had those kind of increases.
No.
That I remember.
No. But you also remember, we, we are growing every single year the number of younger teachers we have.
Yeah. What I'm saying, this, this past year might have been an aberration. I don't know, we'll see.
And those numbers don't include when the teacher is in a training session for the day and out of the classroom?
These numbers do include it. These numbers do include it.
So the 17.7 days per employee out, if, if one of the teachers had 10 days that they were in various sessions out of the classroom for training or whatever, that would include into that?
Yes. But even with that, because my suspicion was that we had more days for professional development than for illness or family care, I was not accurate. So yes, the total days include all of the days, but that's still, that isn't the number one cause for this high number.
But they, they schedule that for their professional days, so they know and they have substitutes come in or they have someone covering.
That's the goal.
Their, their class time when they know.
Now, there are times that I know two weeks in advance, I'm going to be gone for professional development and I get Suzie Swanson to come in and be my sub through the ASUP series. And then on the day that I have Suzie Nelson, Suzie Swanson, somebody else is sick and so the principal really at some point does some rearranging. It's not always first come, first served because we're trying to meet the biggest needs in each building. And we give principals some prerogative and some latitude on that.
I guess I'd like to offer a word of caution. A couple of years ago, Waterloo was, the school district in Waterloo was looking for a superintendent and they had an assistant superintendent that really wasn't willing to take the position at the time because she has a young family. They, she's an older, her, her and her husband started their family later in life. And she was cautious about accepting the position without having the, but with having the knowledge that her school board is going to be supportive of her and demanding that, okay, if she has a meeting late at night, don't show up early in the morning because, or if my kids are running late for school. So I, I want to give us a cautionary word that we, we, we need to be careful. If we want to attract and keep the people who are having the most effect in the classroom, I, I think we might be cutting off our nose to spite our face because these very well meet, I'm sure they're very legitimate reasons and they want to be in the classroom, they, I'm sure would rather be in the classroom than, than having somebody sick at home to, to attend to. So yes, the, the numbers are startling, however, they don't tell the whole story for us. And so it's, I, I think we need to be careful.
Very wise words. I agree.
I think it's important too to correlate this with your goal that you consistently remind us of about making this the best place to work issue. We want our people to feel supported. We want them to know that we understand them. If we're in a kid business, we want them, we want to understand if they have issues with kids at home being sick. The fact that we have for several years taken the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off as a holiday, if, if we take it, we have to count it as a vacation day, but for teachers, they get that day off, which is, I mean, it's just a day they're not scheduled. So things like that send a message about, we care about you and we care about you having time with your family, et cetera, so it's hard to balance all of our needs.
Oh, and by the way, Waterloo did hire. And they, I mean, how many women superintendents do we have in the UEN? Three?
In the UEN, three.
Yeah. So it's, women are very underrated as superintendents in our schools and.
Just ignore your gavel.
I believe you mean underrepresented.
That's right. Well, that too. They're, they're underrated for their effectiveness because we know quite well that, that we have selected well and have a very effective leader in.
Ali, we're being nice to you.
Martha, I want to get Mr. McGreevy up here so he can go home.
Well, we have one more thing. This is one of the reasons we wanted to do this is we have before you a, an HR-related proposal and we realize that there are some questions that you have and so we are going to put under that HR report. Mr. Wilson is going to share some information about the proposed early retirement program and early notification incentive. You can hold off your discussion of that until you get to the point of deciding it in the resolution so we can get to Mr. McGreevy, but I think we probably should put Mr. Wilson up right now.
Mr. LaFurla said you could have his Jimmy John's sandwich if you want it.
Oh, I have some sandwiches.
Speak quickly, Dean.
Like an auctioneer up here. Okay. So a quick overview here, the payroll benefit cost comprised about 80% of all of our district costs. And I've used the analogy of arrows in a quiver before to talk about strategic ways that we can reduce costs. And, and one of the ways is the early retirement program, which many districts across Iowa use, maybe not every year, but every year there are early retirement programs. Toby Reese and, and I have been working closely together to develop a program. We've also contacted legal counsel. Legal counsel has stated that, they said, well, you had a retirement program last year, we paid $20,000 out for certified staff and $8,400 for classified staff for health insurance over a five-year period of time. And the attorney said, that wasn't rich enough. You're really not going to attract anybody to leave with something like, like that, based on his experiences. So what we're, what we need to do is come up with an early retirement program that the main goal is to reduce payroll costs without position terminations by replacing more tenured staff. This whole program is funded out of the management fund and it reduces general fund expenditures by the savings that we will garner by replacing those positions with lower-paid staff or maybe eliminating one or two of those positions as well. The negative, of course, is the loss of experienced staff members. All right? Our model only assumes teachers and administrators are going to be eligible for the plan because there was very little cost savings for, for, that was realized in other positions such as paras, administrative assistants, and from a public purpose standpoint, if we're going to spend money, we need to have a public purpose why we're spending it. If we're not going to gain anything from it, my argument back to Dr. Brechner is why are we doing it? So with that, we have 75 eligible teachers and administrators and one nurse that was in this program. We're going to offer to the first 25 who would apply for this.
If approved by the board.
If approved by the board. Total cost shown on the next screen, which I'll get to assume pay and related benefits. The model assumes that we're going to replacement at lane one and two. Lane one is zero to five years' experience with a BA. Lane two is zero to five years' experience with a BA plus 10 credit hours. The way we're going to do this, that we're proposing to do this, is that we would pay $10,000 in each year one and year two in cash payment that we withhold taxes on. And there would be health insurance costs paid in year one through three of $650 per month or 7, 800 a year. The 650 per month is roughly what, what our, one of our plans, Plan Two is in our health insurance plan. So that's why we selected that plan.
Dean?
Yes?
What age you assuming these people are?
These people are aged 55 and older and have over, I believe it's 10 years' experience in the district with us. Okay? This is the calculation here. There's a column that says current cost. This is the 75 people that are there. We have teachers of about $6.9 million that we're paying out. This is salary and Bennys both. Total administrators about 732 and total nurses of 58, one nurse at 58.9. You can see the cost savings I did this for, if we replaced all 75 staff members, which we don't have the money to do, but I wanted to put that number up there. What we're looking at is that for the total 25 staff members, if we selected 23 teachers or 23 teachers, I should say, opted for this program and two administrators, our cost if we went to lane one to replace those staff members would be about $931,000. Lane two would be about $892,000. If we increased this to 30 staff members with the different mix between teachers and administrators, you can see our cost savings would be a little bit higher. We could go up to 30 staff members if we wanted to. We have enough money in the model that I, that I'm showing here. The model, again, assumes that we would have 25 staff members and those, what we would do is we would throw this out over a three-year period of time. You can see the money we would pay out of the management fund, roughly $480,000 for two years in a row, and then we'd go down to about $210,000 the third year for a total of about $1.168 million it would cost us out of the management fund. So we're saying, does the management fund have the money? Well, what this is, is that this is a man, a management fund effect. Management fund, we, we pay out of there is unemployment claims, our liability and property insurance, and then any retirement incentives that we would come up with. I'm assuming in the model that our revenue will remain constant where it is right now. I have also in the model assumed that per insurance premiums will increase $50,000 a year, which is unlikely unless we have a huge workers' comp problem or we have a huge loss somewhere. Probably that number's not going to jump, $50,000 a year, but I put it in there just to see what it would look like. And then our unemployment claims will remain steady at $25,000 a year. In the first column, that's actual 15, 16, our ending cash at the bottom of that screen shows that we have about $2.5 million in cash. When you factor all those assumptions in, plus what we're looking at for the early retirement program, at the end of the 1920 year, which is the last year of that, we still have $2 million in that, in that cash fund. And I want to leave money in there because A, we may get a big increase in health insurance premiums at some point, and B, if we decide to do another early retirement program at some point, I want to have cash available that we have those options for us. Okay? So again, this assumes only 25 people. If we went up to 30 people. If we went up to thirty people, that last column there projected twenty-one, twenty-two, it goes down from about two million dollars to about one point seven million dollars. So we do have the money to go to thirty people if we wanted to. This will help save about, as you saw on those screens, about nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars of general fund money. We still need to cut about two and a half to three million dollars, depending upon how much of an increase we're going to get this next year from the state. This gets us roughly forty to forty-five percent of the way there. So I'll answer any questions now or we can wait for the discussion period and let John talk.
Thank you. Mr. McGreevy.
Well, you're all worried about me. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
So this is the end of trimester one enrollment report. Quick, easy, dirty. You have some good numbers in your packets there. Since the trimester one of last year, we have gained forty-nine extra students. We are also up forty students from October third already, which is good news and sort of bad news. We're, we're still gaining, which is also good. Minority population is remaining steady for our students at around twenty-two percent. Mobility rate right now is about five percent, which is right on line, on target for the fifteen percent for the whole year. ELL remains steady at five hundred and sixty active students in the program. Special education did have a big increase between last year and this year. Any questions about trimester one enrollment?
The report showed ninety-two hundred and twenty-eight-
Yes.
As actual?
Yep.
It says physically attending, ninety-two twenty-eight? And that includes pre-K, so that's why that number seems, okay?
Yes, correct.
But it was forty more than what official count day?
Correct.
That's good news. We're increasing still.
We are still increasing. And that is active as of right now, too. We are still up.
We, we won't get to count that though for the deal for next year until the year after, so.
They're all in preschool.
That was an excellent, quick report. Are there any questions?
Next time, we're going to try to put you first.
Thank you very much.
You guys have a good day.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, John.
And now we are to our resolutions section. And first resolution approval of the employee early notification incentive for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen early notification incentive as presented.
Excellent second.
Second that.
Very good. Any discussion?
We didn't really explain it. This is if you do not qualify for the early retirement program, but you tell us by December eighteenth, whatever the day is, that you know you're going to be leaving. You have a bonus of a, of a thousand dollars and which gives us the knowledge ahead of time to start looking for replacement.
These folks have about two weeks after the weekend to tell us. They'll know about it probably on Monday, Tuesday. Wow, yeah.
We may, we're planning if the board approves them to put them out with our board action line tonight so that, I, I can't imagine anyone sitting home looking for their board action line tonight, but maybe they are.
I do.
Okay.
When their football team isn't doing so well, they need something to cheer them up and the board action line.
Excellent. Dean, call the roll.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. The motion carries. Now we have approval of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen early retirement incentive. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen early retirement incentive as presented.
Thank you, sir.
I second that motion.
Excellent. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. If I understood you right, Mr. Wilson, the cost is one point one six million?
Uh, I believe that that number's about right.
And you said we'd save nine hundred and thirty-one thousand?
Oh, the general fund, that's correct.
Now, is that in the first year or over several years?
Over the three-year period of time.
So for purposes of reducing next year's budget, you estimate how much would that impact? Two-thirds of that? Half of that?
Forty percent.
Forty percent.
Well, what I'm saying is that if I understand your question correctly, if we have to cut two and a half to three million dollars out, that's nine hundred and thirty thousand toward, toward that.
No, but that, that's why I asked earlier.
Yeah, you're saying is it nine hundred thousand that year?
That's what I asked you early.
In, in one year, yes.
So it's like a one point one million total cost that saves us?
Nine hundred and thirty thousand. It's almost a, a trade. And the, and the, and the, the one point one million is paid over a three-year period of time, but we realize the nine hundred and thirty thousand in the first year.
I understand that.
Saving second, third year.
Actually, no, it'd be a little, because if we increased wages for those people, that number, that total savings would shrink a little bit, yes.
When you figured that nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, did you consider the three percent raise everybody gets next year?
No. That would only be in year one. So it would be about, say, another fifty thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand dollars over the next two years after that. That would, we'd have, we'd have with raises and things. So the net effect would be nine thirty minus the fifty-five, we're about, what, eight?
Two point five million over time. I mean, is the total like two and a half million, two, two point seven in savings over three years?
No. No, it's, it's savings in year one only because we, we swapped those people out with other people. And then we, it would cost us a little more next two and three because we have to give those, those new people a raise. So year one, we'd save nine thirty. And then between year two and three, it would cost us another fifty-five thousand. So the net savings is going to be about eight eighty. So we'd save about eight eighty and spend about a million one out of the management fund.
Do most early retirement plans cost that much compared to what we save?
Oh, yeah. This is typical.
I, I need to go back and question something. You were talking about nine hundred thousand and then eight hundred thousand. That's the savings in the first year.
Correct. Nine hundred, nine hundred and thirty thousand is the savings in the first year. And then in year two, you're going to have a fifty-five thousand dollar, excuse me, a twenty-seven thousand dollar increase. And in year three, you'd have another twenty-seven thousand dollar increase, three percent on top of that. So the net savings after three years is about eight eighty.
Each year?
No.
The third year? But, I mean, you're, you're saying, you say nine hundred thousand in the first year, eight hundred and some thousand in the second year?
No, 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 no. Nine thirty total. Then what ends up happening, so in year one, you have a net savings of nine thirty. But in year two, it's going to cost you twenty-seven thousand dollars because you're going to pay three percent on the nine hundred thousand. And then in year three, you'd pay another three percent if you give them a three percent raise. So if you take nine thirty minus twenty-seven minus twenty-seven, your net savings out of the general fund over three periods of time is about eight eighty.
Three percent raise is for the faculty that you have on staff your second year for-
Yeah, so over three years, we save eight hundred and eighty thousand.
Yes.
We saved the majority of it in the first year.
Correct.
Okay.
We won't realize the expense for, until the second, third years, the additional expense.
Correct.
Am I the only one that's questioning if those experienced people stayed the second year, their salaries would still be considerably higher than the first and second year?
That is true. That was not factored in there. You are correct.
That's the point I'm trying to point out.
Yes, you are correct on that.
Let's say it's six hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I was trying to get to.
The second year.
Yes.
And five hundred thousand dollars the third year.
So over time, we save about two and a half million, two million bucks, something like that.
That's what I'm trying to get to. But I wasn't, we weren't getting through.
Which, which is greater savings than the cost of the early retirement plan itself that we project.
Looking puzzled because if I'm misleading, you tell me. But that's assuming that the people that leave would have stayed the first year and would have stayed the second year. And these people come in at a lower salary and they stay this year and they stay that year. That, that difference there is still going to be there in the second year and every year thereafter.
It, it'll stay there, but it's not, we're not necessarily saving any extra money. The, you're going to save it one time. And then, so what would happen is this. We use, we use these numbers to be simple. Let's say it was a million dollars and five, five hundred thousand, okay? The million dollars would have a three percent raise, that'd be another thirty grand. And then year two would have a little more than thirty grand, but we'll say another thirty. So that'd be about a million sixty. You have a million, a million, a million, and then sixty thousand extra on year two, sixty thousand on year three. Okay? Your savings would be five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand plus fifteen thousand year two and year three. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
No, now I'm more confused. What you're saying is that it costs about twenty, was it six eighty a month? So it's seven thousand some dollars a year plus then another twenty-seven thou, or twenty thousand dollars. So then over three years' time, that's about forty some thousand dollars for each teacher that would take this on. Correct? That'd be the cost per teacher.
Yeah, uh, yeah, seventy-eight hundred, let's round it up to eight. So it'd be twenty-four thousand plus another twenty, it'd be about forty-four thousand bucks.
Forty-four thousand dollars per teacher to do this. And we're thinking, and we're saying that we will get a savings more than, so each year that's thirteen, fourteen thousand. We'll have more than a fourteen thousand dollar savings between the salaries of those teachers who are outgoing versus ones coming in.
It's got to be a lot more than that.
Yeah, we're talking all these numbers now and I'm getting confused.
I have a question. Have we done this before?
Uh, it's been done years before here, yes. Before I got here, it was, yes.
Because I remember something like this. I don't know if we did this.
We, we did this before. It did not have the cash payout. It had the insurance for three years.
Right.
And we didn't have very many people do it?
Actually, Dean, Dean reviewed Janet's information about reduction, reduced savings this year because of rollover that was lower than if people would, would have stayed was one point-
Between one point two and one point four million.
That's, that's a big chunk of change.
You mean, that's just our natural turnover?
No. That is because we had some people that took this program last year. And in some cases, if you don't replace those people, you save-
Sure.
considerably more. And if we hire lesser cost people, it saved us money. So we were on a goal last year to save additional money. We did things like changing the time of the school day. We did things like have an early retirement program. We did things like not fill numerous positions that we had. And the, the savings from last year to this year was over a million.
A million dollars. And, and the model also assumes that all twenty-five positions would be refilled. There may be one or two that may not.
It also-
But I can't tell you that right now.
It also assumes that we hire people at the step one and two. And we would certainly try to do that, but we cannot guarantee that we would do that if we can't find an appropriate person for those jobs.
Well, I noted in the personnel report that we had sixty-three new staff this year, teaching staff.
Yes.
What was that saving compared to the people they filled?
That's part of what we're figuring out.
That's part of the, the, the one point two to one, one point four. That's part of it.
See, that's why I asked if we had done this before to figure out if we, because I remember something like this last year.
Yeah, last year, what we-
What the result is from what the difference was of that for the real number as opposed to what's going to happen. We've done it. What's the savings?
Yeah, I don't have that exact number in front of me, Susan.
I assume you've done all the numbers on this, but I mean, this is, says teachers over ten consecutive years. So if I'm a ten consecutive year teacher and I just have my bachelor's and I've been here and I come here and I retire, that teacher we get no, there's no net savings for, in theory. Because we bring on somebody with a master's or something else. I mean, like, there's-
In, in theory, you're correct.
And our assumption is that we have a certain average salary teacher with average tenure who's going to retire at this savings, that savings. Are those numbers generally correct when people do these assumptions?
I, I don't know that for sure because you don't know who you're going to replace with whom. If you have a physics teacher, chances are you're going to replace them with a more experienced person who's been a physics teacher before. If you're a history teacher, probably not. But as we pointed out, forty, what did we said? Forty-three percent of our teachers have less than five years experience. So you had to pick something.
But we're going to try to, I assume, hire the most qualified teachers we can at all times.
In a competitive market, yes.
So we could, we could be hiring teachers who come in with more, at higher salaries.
You could.
It's very true.
You could. Again, we just don't know. So you had to pick something to compare it to.
But also with this is we're trying to get them to tell us early so we can look for those and have time to find.
Well, that's the other incentive.
Well, both of these, they need to tell us by December.
December.
So that we would know, in theory, if the board approved this one in addition to the other one, we would know as of December eighteenth that we're, we have twenty-five educators leaving in this one and ten educators leaving in that. And we would know by December eighteenth, we have thirty-five positions.
So I don't want to offend our teachers, but if I have twenty-five highly educated, highly paid physics teachers and then I take on a bunch of history teachers who have no experience, we know the savings. But if I take on people who have, I mean, if I, if I don't have, is there a certain circumstance where we say, okay, to be viable, this needs a certain amount of participation, a certain numbers? And are those assumptions in that? I mean, I guess the, the concentrated side of, of the creation of that, of that scenario.
The deal is, is that chances are we're going to hire probably zero to five years experience in most of those positions. Not all of them, I admit that, but I don't, I can't tell you something that I don't know. So, so we have to pick something. I, I think with the bottom line is this. We're going to realize a substantial saving, A. B, if we don't do this, then there's roughly nine hundred thousand, I'll even go down to eight hundred and fifty thousand of cuts that we're going to have to make in positions. So this is a good way to cut costs without terminating positions and increasing class size. No matter what we do, there's pros and cons. But in my opinion, this is a good strategy to reduce our costs and not affect the classroom directly, except for the experience factor.
And a lot of what this does also is it gives us the idea, if someone is already considering retiring, this gives, like I said, this gives us the early information that, you know, while I was thinking of retiring, but I'm not sure. If people are going to leave, they're going to leave. So, and they may not tell us till May. We would rather have an incentive to say, if you're thinking of leaving and you're considering leaving, they're going to leave whether they're ready to or not. Doesn't matter what our finances are, it's up to them. This is just giving them an incentive to say, if you are leaving, tell us early and, you know, we can give you a bonus. I think that helps also. Because even if we didn't have this and people leave, we wouldn't know about it early.
I'm curious how you came up with the six fifty per month for the health insurance.
That mirrors a plan, we have three plans in the health plan. Plan Two's premium is about six fifty a month. So that's what we use for the model. So we would pay in a premium for then of six fifty a month.
I mean, okay, that answers that question. I guess my concern is that I think the cash award is a little high. Wouldn't most people rather have more towards the insurance? Because that's not taxable.
Actually, when we talked to the attorneys, they said no. First of all, the insurance is taxable. If any part of this is given in cash, the whole thing's taxable, even the insurance.
Really?
Yes. So he said that most people would rather have, you know, probably net after tax, they're going to have probably sixty-two to sixty-five hundred dollars of cash in their pocket in year one and the same in, in year two. He said, most people want the cash rather than the insurance. Now, everybody's life is different. Some people may want the insurance. But overall, he said, it's been his experience, cash talks more than the insurance.
And dependent on the age of the teacher, they may not need the insurance benefit.
They may not.
You can't allow them the option and say, here's forty thousand, you split it up the way you want?
No. This is a IRS rule.
Has to be the same for everybody.
Yep. In fact, the way that it works, if one person in the plan opted cash and everybody else didn't, the whole, the whole thing is taxable. It's all or nothing according to the IRS.
All right, any other questions?
I have one question regarding the savings, the eight hundred thousand savings. Is that the net savings when we take the cost minus what we were, what we anticipate savings? The net result is we're spending a total of eight hundred-
The net result is we're spending a total of eight hundred thousand less? Or is it eight hundred thousand less from this area and then that one point one million is being spent from the other fund?
Yes, the one point one million is being spent from the management fund, but with that, it realizes an eight hundred and some thousand dollar savings in the general fund. And the general fund is where we have the spending authority issue. Management fund has no spending authority issues. And as you can see, it cash flows very well.
Okay, so then the net result is still like two hundred thousand dollars more that we're spending, but.
Of cash out, correct. It's just, it's in what bucket that it's going in, which makes a big difference on how financially solvent you are.
Call the roll.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
No.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now we have approval of the consent agenda, which includes personnel action and claims and accounts.
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
I'll take the roll. I got to roll. Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved and, can I read this? Somebody need to make the motion.
Somebody will. I move that a closed session, as provided in section twenty-one point five, parentheses one, parentheses I of the Open Meetings Law be conducted to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual has requested a closed session.
Second.
Excellent. Can this be known in favor? Or is this a roll call?
It's a roll call, isn't it?
It's a roll call.
Yep. Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and we will now go to a closed session.